This is a regular meeting of the Arlington City Council, October eighteenth, six thirty P M. I'm Mayor Rich Nagel, I'll be presiding.
Okay, there we go. At this time, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, we'll have roll call. We have one member that is joining us by Ring Central, Joe Morgan. Are you there?
I am.
Oh, you are. Thank you, we can hear you. Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Batchor.
Here.
Councilmember Bus.
Here.
One member will not be present tonight, that is Matt Sharpie, he will not be attending the meeting, so four members present. Also at the table on my left is City Administrator Amy Newsom, on my right, City Attorney Ross Arneson. So with that out of the way, I would ask for, are there any additions or changes in the agenda?
I have none.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Bus to approve the agenda as presented. All favors say aye.
Aye.
P眾s no. Motion carried. Moving on to the consent agenda, item four, approval of the consent agenda this evening consists of the following. Approval of the bills, October fourth, twenty twenty-one budget workshop minutes, October fourth, twenty twenty-one city council minutes, October seventh, twenty twenty-one Personnel Employee Relations Committee Minute, Meeting Minutes. Item E, accept the resignation of paramedic Spencer Gifford from the Arlington area ambulance service. And lastly, item F, accept grant from Compeer Financial in the amount of three thousand dollars for the Arlington Fire Department to be used for an emergency response equipment. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
No.
Is there a second? Motion by Councilmember Bus, second by Councilmember Thomas. All favors say aye.
Aye.
P眾s no. Councilmember Morgan, are you hearing these motions?
I am, yes.
Okay. Go, feel free to jump in when it's time to vote. That motion is carried. Okay, at this time, item number five, addressing the council, I'm going to invite anyone up that wishes to address the council. It would be for input from that individual only. There will not be any discussion from members of the council to that individual. It is just a time when they can spend three or four minutes expressing their feelings to the council and the topic then will be taken up by the council at a later time. Is there anyone at this time wishes to speak to the council? Would you come forward, please, and use the microphone at the table? Have a chair there and... For the record, if you would state your name and your address.
I'm Francis Birch, I live at three oh two Second Avenue Northwest.
Okay, and your concern?
Parking.
Okay, please explain to us what you mean.
I have my notes here.
Sure.
This summer, I had a pickup truck that was parked in yellow, my driveway. The city has painted on the north and the south side of my driveway for years, painted it yellow so that it was not parked, you know, too close to the driveway. Anyway, there was a white pickup truck that was parked in the yellow with a hitch that was very close to my driveway. So I called the police and the police chief came and I asked him if he could move the truck. I, you know, just move, have the guy move it. No, he couldn't do that. I said, okay then, how about give him a parking ticket? No, he couldn't do that either. I said, well, what can you do? I can have him take the hitch off the truck. Okay, so that was the end of that. So then I went up to the city office and I spoke to Mrs. Newsom and she said to me, you look up the rules for parking and when you find what you need, and she would do the same thing, then I could come back up to her and talk to her. So I did. I had some friends help me because I don't have a computer. Anyway, in the end, it was decided between Mrs. Newsom and the police chief. Now what they would do is just paint over the yellow. Problem solved, right? For them, not for me, okay? So, anyway, after that was done, I wondered to myself why nothing can be done when you're parked in the yellow. Minnesota has, 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 um... What do I want to call them? Not necessarily laws, but restrictions about where you can park, okay? If the curb is painted yellow, you cannot park there, okay? This is what I looked up that nobody bothered to look at when I brought it up to the State Council, to the council that day, to the council room. And then it says in another place, beside curb that is painted yellow, you can't park there. We also have a city ordinance that says, this is ordinance, ordinance number seven point oh three, the B section. Says any curbing painted yellow at the discretion of the city council shall be considered a no parking zone at all times. Okay, so now my questions are, why was all this just ignored and the yellow was just painted over, just to make it go away and nothing has to get done with it? And why does Mrs. Newsom and the chief of police get to make that decision? This is a city council ordinance. This should be changed only by a vote of the city council. This should not be changed by somebody who just wants to change it.
Okay?
So what I would like now is to have my curb repainted yellow because evidently the students that go to school and some of the, some of the staff that work there and probably I'm thinking maybe even the chief of police, they must have been either absent or didn't read their driver's manual when this was discussed because I can't believe you can just go and change it at your own whim. I'm sorry, I just don't believe them. So what I would like is my, my curb repainted yellow and if and when another, another occasion comes up that I need to call, I would expect something to be done about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We will take it up in discussion at a later time. It may not be at this evening's meeting, but we aren't ignoring what you said.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Birch. All right, item six, no announcements. Item seven, communications.
In the packet you'll find a copy of the September second P and Z minutes, the September thirteenth E D A minutes, the September thirteenth Arlington Historical Society minutes, the letter to the Sibley County Commissioners regarding trucks on Main Street and the signs. If you don't like something in there, let me know, I can change it because I haven't sent it out yet. The state demographic centers are population estimates. There's nothing we can do if we don't agree with the numbers, but it's just for our information. Notice from Abdo Akonmiers that they are changing their name to Abdo. A notice from the Minnesota Public Utilities Commission that they would like to adopt rules without a public hearing unless twenty-five people write in that they would like a public hearing. Take a look at them, there was a lot of changes. It was a very large document that I included for you to take a look at. And a notice that the city of Arlington received the deed redevelopment grant in the amount of eighty thousand five hundred dollars for the former Seneca building.
And that grant money again is to be used for?
Demolition of the Seneca site.
All right, any questions on the communications items?
I got one. Look at the girl after we talked about that letter to them, or in and to Kim. Has he called E D A?
No, he has not.
All right, moving on to reports. Annual reports in Arlington Fire Relief Association, Secretary Treasurer Spencer Hagenmiller and President Tim Hagenmiller. Looks like President Tim Hagenmiller.
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening, yes. Spencer's not able to make it here tonight, he's actually in Newfoundland on a trip and his trip started out a little rough, so I'll be absolutely honest. The paperwork he was all going to give me, Nicole and I can't find it, they're a death in the family and then they had to change all kinds of things off the trip, so things got crazy. But the Relief Association has been doing very well with our funds. Right now, as you know, we're at a thousand seven hundred fifty per year on retirement after twenty years of investment. And we were looking at coming to the council and asking for eighteen hundred and then with Abdo and the state doing our reports and that's, I was looking at with me, which, like I said, Nicole and I can't locate. But their recommendation is that we could actually go up to twenty-three hundred a year. But our asking, I would be back if the council would approve for the two thousand to do a nice jump for us. The funds have been doing very well. There's enough money in there for funding it to take it to twenty-three. But again, too, we don't want to do that just in case the markets would be a little unsettled with us. So that is what we are asking the council for this evening.
Okay, and that'll be a little later on the agenda, I believe.
So you don't have any of the paperwork to sell us?
No, I don't.
How can we make a decision with all the paperwork, though?
Well, basically, it's all, I don't know. I tried calling Spencer out there and he doesn't have his cell reception.
Okay, well, we'll take that up.
Amy, had you seen the paperwork all that we had?
I have some information from the state auditor that the personnel committee reviewed, so that was Matt and Joe and Mayor Nagle.
And that'd be the paperwork that I was looking for.
So we'll take that up later then when that comes up? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item B, September Police Department report, Chief Conichney. Good evening, sir.
Hi, how are you guys?
Good.
Been like this for a couple of weeks. You're the first guy to say something.
Still partying down here, though.
Oh, yeah. Looks like I'm close, like you're gonna listen. Police Department report, this is for past September. We have total of one hundred eighty-eight I C Rs. Ninety-nine of those were traffic stops. Compared to September a year ago, it was at two twenty-eight and our running total for the year were just at a little over fifteen hundred. There was no major criminal events there at that point at all and, and no major concerns that I could think of, so. Does anybody have any questions on the September report? The mayor had asked about our nuisance ordinance targets that we did earlier this spring. And I apologize, mayor, I thought I had mentioned something about that in May. But of our list that we had there, you can see, I went through the I C Rs and you can see a majority of the ones that we had noted to be some sort of a violation or something did what I considered, I guess, some significant improvement. Meaning compared to the picture I took when the violation happened, going back, there was a significant effort to, to relieve the nuisance violation. And in my mind, those were the result at that point. Two properties did get administrative citations. One had some building materials on their property over ninety days and the other was a inoperable motor vehicle. Didn't have cabs sitting in the back of their property. So those are the only two that have issued citations yet. As of now, the property is still, they have a problem, but they're on the top of the list for next spring.
So when you issue a citation, well, I guess I'll back up. When were the letters sent out? What is the date of the letters?
Well, I know that we did our follow-up in April and I think I gave them maybe a couple of months.
Because of, I think this list was presented to the council in January, I believe it was, the identified properties in January.
Yeah, I think we sent.
Surprised me because it's still, there's snow on the ground, how is it all?
Well, I don't know, there wasn't really snow on the ground when I drove around and picked up these properties.
This is April, April fourteenth.
April fourteenth? Okay, that sounds a little...
Yeah.
And then you don't recall when the letter was sent out?
I believe it was maybe a couple of months before that or a month before that. I'd have to go back and check on the I C Rs.
So the, the two, the two properties that were, received a citation, was that spelled out in the letter? Or what, I mean, what did the letter say as far as what would happen if after X number of days, this wouldn't be corrected?
I can't remember, I have to check for the letter itself, but it did specifically cite whatever the issue was on the property as being a violation. And they had thirty days to correct the violation and they were invited to call and work with the police department if they needed longer than that. And that if, if they didn't correct the violation within thirty days, they're contacted the police department and worked out other arrangements. They could be, could give an administrative citation and/or a state citation.
I have a problem with something that draws a citation in the spring of twenty-one, giving them until the spring of twenty-two to clean it up. And basically, as you said, what happened? We'll take it up next spring.
Well, you know, that's not true. I mean, I definitely could go back and I could issue these other two properties with state citations because they basically ignored it the whole time. So, but yeah, I can definitely go back and they can get state citations and would the city be interested in debating one of these properties?
What do you mean by that or what process are you talking about?
Well, I guess, I guess, you know, I can issue the citations and they can pay the fines and deal with court, but the violation can still continue, I suppose, or you can still issue citations.
I can jump in, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, would you please?
I'm no longer doing this, as you know, as a city prosecutor, but we consult with the current city prosecutor. There's a procedure where not only have a citation go to court, which could result in a fine, but also ask the court for an order abating the nuisance. It's basically a court order saying, hey, you pay this fine and you clean it up in so many days. And then if they don't obey the court's order, they're theoretically in contempt of court, which could result in jail time. So the court has a pretty heavy lever on them. In the forty-seven years that I did this, we had one or two cases, real hard news people, that the court ended up either threatening or actually jailing them for a weekend, you know, and then they complied. But that's kind of, you know, a very extreme situation. But if somebody is, you know, clearly thumbing their nose at the city, you know, that's kind of the ultimate solution is asking the court for an abatement. Would you agree to?
Yeah, yeah, I guess I'm not familiar how that works, how that works over here, but that would make a lot of sense, yeah.
Well, the city council members that have been on the council since I've been mayor, namely Michelle Batchor, knows that this is probably one issue that I've started, when I started out seven years ago. I, I just sort of made it my mission that there's, you know, we should not tolerate messy, I'm not talking about messy, I'm talking junk yards. I see towns that do tolerate it and it's an eyesore. It definitely doesn't invite people to come and live here with us. So I've got some, I've got some issues with, with them. I can certainly stop and talk to you about that privately. I don't need to air it all right now, but...
Well, no, that's okay. And I, you know, I apologize, mayor, after I issued those citations and it took a while before I figured out that nothing had been paid or nothing had been done with that, you know, just kind of sitting on my desk, it's something I needed to get around to doing.
Right.
I do intend to just go ahead and issue those state citations at this point.
Yeah, and I'm talking about a lot of the other ones, too. I noticed there's one on, I was driving in an alley and if, if you want to look at yards, go drive alleys. I mean, that's, that's where the true nature of the house or the property is, is what you see in the alley. One of the items that was on here and it is, is noted as noted improvement, there's a pickup in the back with no license plates on, so. I don't know where that, and it was identified here, if I can find it, I'm not going to say what the address was. In your initial list, it said inoperable motor vehicles. Well, I think a pickup in the alley without any license plates on might still be an inoperable motor vehicle.
Yeah, I agree.
They can't drive it too far.
Even if I, even if I think, and maybe you and I are thinking about the right one.
Maybe.
We had issued the notice, then I noticed that the vehicle was gone for a while and then I think I noticed it's back outside on the driveway.
Okay.
If it's the same as you and I are thinking.
Well, yeah, the, the two with the citations, neither one of those is the one that I'm talking about.
Right, yeah.
It's a different one. And I guess the question is, on the fourth of April, this is what the properties looked like. What do they look like now? You know, that's six, six months ago already, so.
Well, I think the letter was issued before April.
Right.
And then they had, they were given some time and then around April fourteenth was the time that we went back around and checked the properties and noted some to maybe get improvement. Now, from April until now, has those problems started back up? Yes.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's...
And, and a lot of these properties will continually be
Right.
on our list and, well, I guess we'll have to just deal with each property and escalate, and escalate as we go along.
Because I've been through this and, you know, in a few years or a few years, in a few months, there'll be snow on the ground and one will forget about everything that's there until next spring, so there we are again.
How is it written? So does it matter that if you clean it up, then you're in compliance? I mean, then you're going to go back on a compliance, I understand.
That's when you go back on.
But I mean, it becomes a babysit bill.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
But why have ordinances?
If you're not going to enforce them. We take, we take an oath to enforce ordinances, so, you know, unless the ordinances are...
I'm not saying not to enforce them, I'm just saying that they could have done in compliance, out of compliance.
Right, right.
I'm assuming that these two properties have not really followed the ordinance or rule for quite some time?
I, yeah, I wouldn't, I don't know specifically what the, what the issue is with the two that were, citation was issued, but...
As a philosophical comment, based on my experience as city attorney, it's an ongoing process. What you hope for is an upward trend. You know, as, as the message gets out there, you'll have fewer problem properties, but there are always going to be some. There's always a few hard heads that, as to your point, you know, you cite them, they clean up, three months later, right back where they were. And it's kind of a case of, you know, who gets worn out first? Does the city get worn out getting them citations? Do they get worn out paying penalties, you know? But ultimately, going back to that previous discussion, you can ask for an abatement, you know, where the court orders them, okay, you don't do this anymore, period, okay? And then the penalty ratches up. And again, that's extremely rare that you have to go that far. The other situation, of course, is you always have new people come to town. They're either not aware of the ordinances or don't care. And maybe where they came from, the municipality didn't care. So, you know, you're always going to have nuisance problems, always. You're never going to get away from it completely, so.
Yeah, I know, we're never going to get to a point where you'll come to us and say, boy, I'm glad I got that last one taken care of, no more problems.
Wouldn't that be nice?
It's not going to happen, but...
My, I guess my philosophy with nuisance ordinances is I just want compliance. And so if I give people a letter and I can go and talk to them about their property and kind of plan out what the deal is and people have been a little defensive about their property and some of the things that they store in there and it can be, it can be a little touchy. But my philosophy is if I can, if I can give them a letter and get moving towards improvement, then that's what I want. I don't, I'm not, unless the council wants to tell me differently, I'm not like a real huge fan of citing everybody for property nuisance with state citations right away. I guess I'm looking for compliance and cooperation. Yeah, so, and I invite council members and citizens of Arlington who see a property that they have a concern about, absolutely email me, contact the police department, we will follow up on it and we will do I C Rs and document our response to it. And, yeah, I'm not, I'm not above issuing a state citation if that's what it comes down to. I'm a pretty easy guy to work with and if you could just ignore me, that's a lot to do.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that comment.
Yeah.
All right, anything else for the chief? Thanks again.
You guys have a good evening.
You too. B M C, Planning and Zoning Community Center report, Mr. Mangus.
Hello, how's everyone?
Good.
All righty, I'll keep this brief. We'll start out with the community center. Nothing major going on, some minor things. I would like to address that I do need to reach out to the dugout because there seems to be a lack of communication when it comes to certain things after events. I e, um, a growing number of, um, how do you, like, containers for like soda and stuff like that. So I need to reach out to them, get on the same page of how we address getting rid of those so there doesn't cause clutter, excuse me, in the utility closet. But beyond that, everything's been going pretty well at the community center. Like I said, some minor hiccups, nothing over the top, serious. To the more pressing matters when it comes to planning and zoning, good news is I did submit the letter of intent for the grant that I've brought to you guys' attention. So keep your fingers crossed that, um, we, that gets approved and we can move forward with that. I also would like to let you guys know that everything's moving along with Tony Huff's property. He just got the lumber to build his pool sheds and stuff, so that's good there. Data Metal Craft just submitted for all the permits and starting to begin with that, so everything's going well with them. Beyond that, there's really not much else going on. So if anyone got any questions for me, I'd be more willing to answer them.
Councilmembers? Councilmember Morgan, anything?
Uh, nothing here.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it. Revenue and expenditure reports.
Take a look at the revenue. Summary is up on the screen so that Joe can see it at home. Everything's kind of where it's expected to be, except the community center fund. The revenue is quite under where I had expected it to be at this time of the year. So hopefully that will pick up yet. Otherwise, it's looking pretty good. Same thing with the expenditures. Everything's sitting about where it should be at this point. Questions, let me know.
Yeah, any questions on that? All right, move on to ordinances. First reading of ordinance number three thirty-seven.
Did you want to...
Phil, do you want to introduce it?
Did you want to introduce it and say that there's a new copy in front of everyone?
Yes, I do apologize. There were some minor grammatical errors that the mayor addressed to me, which I do appreciate. I'm not the greatest linguist here, so. Beyond that, pretty much what this chapter is, it's just solidifying a permitting process for the city to help cover us. Given the fence situation, I figured it would be wise for us to put on record that something that the city follows because through my experience with policy, that could change depending on who the person is. Because through my experience with policy, that could change depending on who the person is of the time. Now, I wanna make it very clear with this policy, um, when it comes to particularly, given that I do violations and things like that. Um, it will be strictly for stop workers, for people that haven't filed for permits. Anything beyond that, that is the responsibility of the building official and on me to inform the building official, hey, someone is, like, case in point, let's say someone's building a pool shed without a permit. I come across it, I issue a stop work order because they didn't get a permit, and then from there, I would let the building official know and then they would, um, take it from there. I did talk to League of, um, Minnesota Cities about this. Given that I do the violations and stuff, I can do that as long as it is for them not getting a permit. Because given that I have no building experience, it will be on the building official. Now, one thing that the mayor did address to me, um, if you look at thirty-two dash one, you will see at the very bottom, um, about obtaining a permit. Um, with, uh, otherwise said about planning, um, uh, unless me or the building official state otherwise. Now, that could be determined, I look at it two different ways. I can create a waiver that I can, that the person signs and I sign off on saying that we don't need. A, um, land use permit for that or a land user building permit where I and the building official sign off on or. One of those two, or just be an email where I confirm it and the building official confirm. Now, through my experience, emails are normally the route we go. However, for legality reasons, it might not be bad to do a waiver, because particularly for minor, like accessory unit, uh, accessory structures. Um, just in case my interpretation of a minor accessory might be different than, let's say, ten years from now, my predecessor. So, it might not be bad to create a waiver, but I leave it to you guys to determine how you want to approach that.
Could you maybe explain why it's, uh, a little dangerous to, uh, hang on the words unless said otherwise?
Well, based on that wording, you could interpret as word of mouth. However, it really would depend on the way the policy is, like, even though we would have this as a solidified code. There still is policy implications on pretty much procedure on how it's done. But through my experience, people in my field, particularly planning and zoning, we always get everything in written email. I've not come across anyone that I've worked with in my time that does not hate the email, cause you go by word of mouth, that could cause a lot of litigation issues. So we get everything at least in email form, but if we get another situation, say the fence where it devolves to, how it devolved. It might be wise to cover ourselves maybe with a waiver. Just, I mean, I don't know, um. Attorney Arneson, would that be wise to do a waiver? I would look for your advice on that.
What, what situations would call for a waiver?
Let's just say like, um, let's say someone wants to put up like a trestle, like just a minor trestle with like roses and stuff like that. And it'd say someone, a neighbor's dog gets in there and gets cut up by the roses, wrecks it and things like that, or like shrubs. Like a small little landscape of shrubs with some gravel and stuff. I mean, with those things, it might not, we might not need a waiver for, like, just a written thing, but certain things like that, more or less.
Some things not requiring a building permit, people are allowed to do anything when they do, right?
Well, they might require land use. That's the thing. There's a separation between land use and building permit.
Okay, well, okay.
That's the thing. It's like, let's say if someone wants to build a, uh, ten by ten shed that's a hundred feet, that only requires a land use. So that would be more my responsibility, not building, uh, the building official. Same with the fence. Uh, building officials do not deal with fences or part, or driveways or parking lots. I get that strictly on me to deal with those, so.
So, what was the word of law?
Oh, it's in, um, three to the purpose. Um, it's said otherwise by me or the building official, like, let's say.
Yep, right there. Unless said otherwise, and I, I brought it to his attention because I thought, well, you know, if, if Phil says something to a person coming, oh, you don't need a building permit. How can either, our party said that?
You know, you know what's a really good practice, and this is just coming from project management. Anytime you have a phone conversation or a conversation with anything, just follow up with an email and say, here's what.
There you go, I see that, that's.
And you send it, if they do not reply, that's legally binding.
Sure, and that's what I was, that's what I was going after, that there's a, a paper trail.
Good idea, yeah.
Oh, exactly, that's.
And another, another advantage of that is you can also recite, well, this is what you told me you're planning to do. And if that's what you're doing, you don't need a permit. And then they go to work and do something completely different, it can't come back and say, well, you said I didn't need a permit. You can say, well, wait, this email says, this is what you're gonna do, you did this instead, that does require a permit.
In my past practice is yes, we've, I've done emails and that's more or less had the legal binding. I just figured I would recommend maybe a waiver if you guys, I let, I leave it up to you guys how you wanna do it. But yes, emails, I believe, would be legally binding and I, I agree with that, so if you guys are fine with it.
And then they have a chance to respond if they're out of it.
Right, and if they, and.
Yep.
If you don't want to state, when you're lawyer with the principal engineer or traffic engineer, they send you, this is what you said, this is what I said.
That, that's pretty much what I do.
Just to make sure everybody's on the same page, because talking, yeah.
So that's a notice of compliance or something.
Exactly, no, that, that's exactly what it's called, and, and I'm perfectly fine with that, as long, if you guys are comfortable with me just making, uh, sure that I document the emails when it comes to situations like that.
Okay, so no waiver needed?
No.
Uh, just, uh, one other thought, so I think most residents probably have email, but we could have some who do not. So for that case, they may need one, just a, a typed up piece of paper.
A letter.
Um.
You can send a letter.
Letter.
Yeah. It's probably a small percentage, but.
And I, I do that now when it comes to certain zoning reports that I do, so that can easily be done.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions concerning this ordinance? Just the question.
Does the council want me to read the whole thing? I certainly will. You read through it, okay. Basically, it's, how can we summarize it?
Thank you. He's supposed to read the whole thing.
I know, I am. It is crea- it is, what?
Read it.
Read it?
It is a page.
They're really gonna after you at this.
I think the reading, uh, means that the council actually knows what's in it. So if you read it, that's the reading.
I like your, I like your explanation. So this again is creating a chapter thirty-two, permitting process of the city code. Is that correct? Yes. Great.
Are we strapping that unless? Said. I didn't call it some wording.
Yeah.
Communicated?
Documented.
Communicated, I like.
Documented or communicated. Communicated could be verbal also.
Documented.
Okay, so then the word documented would be.
Instead of said.
Instead of said, not that, Phil?
Yep, got that down right now.
All right. Okay, first reading then, and I'm not gonna read it. An ordinance creating chapter thirty-two, permitting process to allow a regulation of, of the process of permits in the city of Arlington. Okay, any other points or questions? Thank you, Phil. That will be the first reading. All right, item ten, resolution seventy-two dash twenty-one, amending the plan, position, classification, assignment table and pay grid effective January one, twenty twenty-two.
I emailed out and put in front of everybody a new copy with changes highlighted in pink. I had to go back in and make some updates because the assistant ambulance manager position, that is a full-time position now, was not included in here when we originally went through this in the summer. So, that position is now added in. And when I've started working on employee performance evaluations over the weekend, so it was my first chance to actually put this into practice. And when you put it into practice is when you find things that are not quite right. So on. The page with the pay grades, I just corrected the language to match the performance evaluations we actually use. And the point system to match the poor performance evaluations we're actually using. And then the other change was adding the assistant ambulance manager under the classification table. And then when I was doing the performance evaluations, I noticed number two twenty-eight, which is our deputy clerk. I, I had the wrong numbers in. I had an administrative assistant numbers in instead of the deputy numbers. And I was wondering why her pay level was so low. So see, going through it, you realize I used the wrong one, so I corrected that for a deputy clerk.
Why were these one?
Those were changed to match our actual performance evaluations, so the language is the same now.
Oh, naturally, it's not gonna say language. I wasn't saying it's a different language.
No, no, that's not why. It's just so that the language matches the actual performance evaluations we use.
So as far as this grade one seventeen administrative assistant entry and that isn't on, they don't, the grid does not apply to them, is that?
Correct, we don't have an administrative assistant.
Okay, so if we would, that would be.
Then we'd have to amend it, and this is not set in stone. This is supposed to be updated every year anyway. So if we do hire an administrative assistant, we'll amend it to include that person. I don't foresee us hiring one in the near future, so.
Yeah.
And the intern is not a full-time position, so that wouldn't go on.
All right. Council member Morgan, do you, have you received, uh, the updated version?
Yes.
And do you have any, any input, any questions?
Uh, no, we've, uh, some of this we've talked about at the personnel, uh.
Mm-hmm, correct, yeah. Okay, would someone wish to introduce the resolution?
I'll introduce resolution seventy-two dash twenty-one, amending the plan, position, classification, assignment table and pay grid effective January first, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Thank you. Resolution seventy-two dash twenty-one introduced by council member Bus, second by council member Morgan. And it is again a resolution, um, seven, seven, seventy-two dash twenty-one, amending the plan, position, classification, assignment table and pay grid effective January one, twenty twenty-two. Any further discussion? Vote by roll call, council member Thomas. Council member Batson.
Yes.
Council member Bus.
Yes.
Council member Morgan.
Yes.
Four votes in favor, none opposed, one council member absent. The resolution is adopted. Moving on to unfinished business, item number eleven, Northland Drying update.
And before we get into this, I also emailed out, Joel, hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at this, and I put in, I emailed out to council members, I made their copies here for everyone to take a look at. Some information from Lee Ortloff from People's Service, uh, regarding, we had a meeting last Wednesday. Lee Ortloff, Greg Stang, myself, the mayor, attorney Arneson, uh, went to take a look at the issue with them pumping that potato juice into our waste water treatment plant. Uh, attorney Arneson, would you like to, you sent out a nice summary to everyone of what happened. Would you like to kind of? Summary is that for council?
Um, well, uh. Yes, just to recap a little bit, um, uh, early on, uh, representative of Northland Drying had asked People's Service if they could pump dry this foundation or pit. Um, it's a leftover basement from, uh, a former canning factory, uh, building. It's a very deep basement. And People's Service said sure, but at that point, what was contained in that pit was rainwater. Uh, well, subsequent to that, um, there was another area that had collected, uh, potato juice, and that area was pumped into the pit. And then Northland, uh, pumped out of that pit into our, uh, septic system. And People's Service detected it immediately the next day at the plant and then, uh, terminated that pump connection. Um, and, uh, made it clear that, uh, that was not what had been, uh, approved. And that, that in fact would be a violation of MPCA standards. Uh, uh, we did have a meeting with Mr. Omscheid, uh, we took a tour of the area, had a very productive discussion. And I think it's, uh, clearly understood that Northland Drying is not going to be doing any direct pumping into our septic system without, uh, notifying People's Service. Giving them an opportunity to test what they proposed to, to pump. Uh, and or advise people, or, uh, People's Service would advise Northland, uh, that perhaps the, uh, liquid needs to be treated, uh, before it can be pumped. Uh, that led to further discussions about long-term, uh, solutions. Uh, Northland apparently does have the idea that they'd like to use that pit as a collection point, um, for this potato runoff or juice. Um, and, uh, there's a couple of options, well, three options. Uh, one is that they could hire a, uh, septic service to pump it out and truck the, uh, liquid. Out of the city. But again, it's, it's, it's a pretty large, uh, holding area, so, uh, trucking might not be practical. Another option would be to have it chemically treated, uh, which is something People's Service could do. A third option that People's Service mentioned at the meeting was they could aerate that pit. Uh, that's similar process to what People's Service is using at our sewage treatment plant, uh, where there's an aeration system put into this Northland pit. And it aerates it and, and, um, you know, dissipates the, uh, phosphorus or whatever, whatever it is that would, would, uh. Be bad for our system. Uh, so those are some options that were discussed. And, uh, I think the understanding is Northland was going to consider all that and presumably, uh, get some engineering advice about what to do to move forward. Uh, and, uh, People's Service Regional Director, Mr. Stang was at the meeting and our local manager, Lee Ortloff. And, uh, they've conducted further discussions since then. And so I think the communication right now is good. And hopefully it's gonna lead to an ultimate solution, uh, not only for the disposal of their wastewater, but also a substantial reduction of the smell. Um, which has been emanating from this, you know, potato juice that's up till now just allowed to ferment on the, uh, on the site.
Very good, yeah, very good.
Lee Ortloff phoned a contact at MPCA and shared that information with me, Omscheid, and he was going to, Lee Omscheid was going to contact MPCA, just to make sure they were doing everything properly.
Yeah, I think it was a very productive meeting. I came away from that thinking that, you know, that, uh, everything that was, was an issue at that meeting was aired. And, uh, and, uh, you know, so hopefully, um.
And Lee Omscheid was very receptive.
He was, he was very receptive, and I think he's very eager to work with People's Service as People's Service is to work with him and getting it, getting it resolved.
So, um, I'm going back in my memory and, uh, when I toured, uh, the facility and it's potentially changed now. Um, but inside the facility, they had, you know, a couple feet of potatoes basically stacked up all the way around. Um, and they were basically, I think they were just trying to allow them to maybe let some of the juices out, or they were using that as a, as a berm or something. But there was several inches of, uh, potato juice in that facility, which in, in most facilities, you have floor drains, which then would, you know, likely lead to the city. So it was, you know, I kind of raised the question at that time whether or not, um, you know, we were charging them and how that would take place. So, uh, typically you're charged based on your water usage, well, they're, they're bringing. So, uh, typically, you're charged based on your water usage. Well, they're, they're bringing all these potatoes in, which are then leaking the juices out of them. So like that pit, uh, you know, we'd have to have a water meter on there if they were gonna treat it, and then, you know, take it to the city so that we could get basically paid for our service. It would be my suspicion is that maybe we've been getting some of these juices for, for quite a while and, and maybe no payment. And I don't wanna make that accusation, I guess, but it's just sort of, this fluid's on the ground. If they're not hauling it out, it's going somewhere. Um, or they'd be drowning in it.
Joe, Greg Stang did give me an example from another community where they do have it in their fee schedule, the city to charge them something. So it's something we need to look at and decide if they are gonna pump it into our water treatment plant, are we gonna charge them some type of surcharge?
Now, that day, we did not go in. And are you saying, uh, uh, councilmember Morgan, that this was inside the building where the potatoes were laying and the floor was wet with juice?
Yeah, so back, back when I toured, and this has been a while ago, and I don't know how it is now, so I, I don't wanna, you know, say that this is the way it is. But the way, the way it was then, um, like literally, I stepped in, and there was batches of water on the ground in the main plant where they were doing the drying. And, and the potatoes were basically stacked in a, uh, they had like a, basically like a pyramid, you know, I'd say two feet tall, berm of potatoes, and then you had all this juice kind of in the center of that area. And, and it was almost seemed like they were trying to allow some of those juices, because these are rotting potatoes, to, uh, leach out. And then there was employees running around with squeegees, squeeging water, um, to different places. Well, for me, I know buildings, uh, there's, there's gotta be a drain somewhere. If you're not pumping this stuff and hauling it out on tankers, it's flowing down to, you know, a sewer system. Uh, and maybe now they're having it go out into that, into that tank outside, which was very large. And that was a, that was a problem at a time where they, they didn't have any sort of, um, you know, basically, you know, bar around it. I mean, a kid could walk up and fall into it and drown, or a dog. Um, so I, I don't know if that's really truly been dealt with permanently or not, but that was, that was a situation at one time. But yeah, typically, a facility is either gotta process this water, meaning they would have to get a, uh, evaporator to evaporate it, process it, it themselves, which is what I do at my facility. Or you, you, uh, pay to truck it out. And in this case, since it's food process, they could probably ship it to Leesour, and they would utilize it to basically create methane and power and everything else. That's all expensive. So it's, the cheapest route is probably to get us to process it. It's just whether or not we would really wanna do that.
Well, we did not go in the plant itself that day. We were, we were outside looking at that, uh, large holding tank, the pit. And, um, so I, I would hope that the items you described as far as them having them piled up inside are no longer taking place. Although I suppose there's always a chance that if they, if they have trucks that are constantly coming, and they have a breakdown and have to shut everything down, I, I can imagine that could be a problem. And, uh, I think we impressed on them. They need to, they need to have a, a plan in place to deal with that type of situation. So.
I might chime in.
Yes.
Concerning, piggyback off what Attorney Arneson said about when it comes to smell. Um, I feel I need to address the fact that I'm getting consistent complaints about it. And they're getting to the point where people are very angry, and I can't sugarcoat it. They're very angry and they're getting home, it, they're getting very angry where I'm getting yelled at on the phone. And it's, it's making my department look bad. It, this is, I don't know how else to address it. I don't know how else to tell people that this is a state issue. I've repeated it many times. But it's getting to the point where residents, I feel, are at a breaking point. And now granted, we have, as things have progressed, we have better, I think we're building a better rapport with Northland. So I feel if council wants me to, I could sit down with them and try to address this issue with smell. But it's getting to the point where I'm getting consistent calls. And I will bring this up to the P and Z community to see if people are, um, coming to them as well. But I can tell you from just here, I have been almost daily, at least once a day, people talk, calling me and dr- and asking about the smell, and it's, they're not nice. So I just want to be coun- I just want to make council aware of it. And I know that, given the situation with this pump and stuff, we're trying to build a better rapport, but this is something that I feel we need to address because I don't think residents can tolerate this anymore. And this is, does not look good for us. It looks particularly with the fence situation with PEEPs repair. I mean, with PEEPs repair, it looks like we took a very neutral stance on that when it was enabling dispute. With the fence, we took a very hard stance. And now with Northland, it looks like we're favoring them, and it, it doesn't look.
I disagree with what you're saying, David.
Well, I'm not saying we do. It's just from what I'm getting interprets from the complaints, because I'm literally getting people yelling at me, why aren't we doing anything?
Have you taken a list of all this?
Yes, I have a list of complaints. Yes, I have. I've been documenting this stuff. Um, it, people are very upset by this, and I wouldn't bring this on us.
I would think we collect data and we'll see what it says.
And I have been. And, and I'm not trying to pick one off, and like I said, I think.
I'm not saying we are, but I'm saying I wanna see data. I don't wanna just hear about it. I wanna see data. You should have a list of all the people that called in.
We do. I, I have a folder of it if you would like to, um.
Whenever you got it.
Okay.
Say not to interject, uh, do we have an idea of, is this, is this smell from the stack? Or is it from, you know, potatoes onsite or this juices? You know, in the past, you know, I've noticed it from the stack. And I've noticed it at, you know, even at my house. I've noticed it when I'm, you know, going into the bakery, kind of walking, kind of in that area. And now granted, lately, I haven't been out and about as much, but I haven't, I don't personally recall smelling it that bad. So I, I was, when I, when I was reading through all the complaints, and I, and I fully believe that, that, you know, the residents are fed up with it and, and are dealing with something. I'm just trying to figure out, is it, is it the stack related? Or is it, um, you know, the juices that are in this tank or potatoes being stored somewhere? If we could figure that out.
The complaints that I've been getting, Joe, have been about fifty-fifty. Half of them burnt potato smell and half of them rotting smell.
Yeah, and, and, and some of that unfortunately comes from which way the winds are.
Correct.
And, and obviously that changes throughout the different seasons.
Well, and, and this is why I feel, given the way things have progressed, that I feel that it would be wise to more or less sit down with Northland, just let them know. Like, I, I don't wanna blind them. I want them to let them know that, how the residents feel, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm pretty confident that they will work with us and that they're not trying to cause any issues with us. It's just, I feel it's getting to the point particularly how angry some of these people have been with these calls that I think we need to sit down and talk to them about it. Um, that's pretty much all I'm saying.
I don't disagree with that, but I think we need to look at the data first. Because we need to get human out of it. What's that for data? Is it fifty percent of can, is it a hundred percent of can?
Well, since we've been collecting it, it, from what I've gathered, it's been more or less residents that have been around that, um, around Northland, you know, residents that live around there. So particularly, I can tell you, um.
Well, there's a few, a few new names on that list, and I, I, I went through all of them trying to, trying to figure out, you know, is this more global or is it, you know, just a small particular area? And there's definitely other ones that are on there. And there's a couple of those names on that list that are very relevant.
Exactly.
And, and I get it. But my take of it is, next time, the only column in there, are we gonna go over to Aaron's List and blow up that and tell them it stinks? We can't do it.
And I, I completely agree. Uh, this is, like I said, this is why I kinda wanna sit down with them because, like I said, the reason why I bring this up is because some of them have been consistent. A lot of them are residents that live near Northland. It's just, they're getting kind of aggressive, and I'm trying to be neutral of this. And, but at the same time, you also have to look at my perspect- uh, perspective where people are literally yelling at me on the phone to do something. And I feel the best approach to do this is to sit down with Northland, let them know that there's residents that are around them, um, that have, that have some issues.
I mean, I was gonna say.
They are aware of it.
We, for the past couple of years, they're very aware.
They are aware of it.
So. Well, I mean, then, then my question to council is, how do you want me to deal with this? Because I have people literally yelling at me on the phone.
Yeah, hang the phone up. I think that, that is not, that is a discourtesy that you don't have to put up with.
I mean, I get that, but at the same time, these are residents that I have to, we are.
So, so wasn't there a time where we were gonna have them contact, uh, uh, gosh, the guy that's kind of representing Northland? Wasn't he sort of handing out his, uh, phone number to them anymore?
Yeah.
And, uh.
Yeah, that's over. That's over with.
Well, and.
Okay.
And given that, I feel maybe, given that he was the rep, that person was the representative at the time, maybe there wasn't good communication. So I figured maybe if we just sit, sit down and talk to them one more time about this, maybe there would be some type of result or anything. I mean, I, I'm open to anything. It's just like I said, I feel.
Well.
Do we have a nuisance, uh, uh, ordinance that would, uh, have them get ticketed based on smell or complaints or anything like that?
Joe, this is Attorney Arneson. Yes, we do have an ordinance, uh, part of our city code that deals with nuisances, which includes noxious smells. The problem with that is, um, you know, there, there, there isn't a good, um, measurement for what's a noxious smell.
It's subjective.
Yeah, it's subjective. We have discussed it in the past. It's, it's something that, um, uh, it's hard to quantify. But, uh, that doesn't mean that we can't enforce, um, uh, you know, the ordinance. I guess, uh, it would, it would require us to have probably a, a lot of anecdotal testimony in front of a judge. You know, in other words, a whole line of people saying, well, you know, I can't give you a statistical measurement of this smell. I just think it really stinks, you know? And if we get a, a good group of citizens telling the judge the same thing, you know, that's probably a basis for a conviction on a nuisance citation. It's one of the harder, uh, areas of nuisance law to enforce. Uh, when you have, uh, sound or particulate, uh, matter, you know, being discharged, uh, we have scientific measurements for those things.
Yeah, and I mean, we've seen, we've seen improvement. I would say the sound, and quite frankly, the smell has been fairly quiet until this, this recent thing now. Whether or not these residents were experiencing it, this whole, you know, gap of what I would say has probably been around six to eight months, maybe even a little bit longer, where it's been fairly quiet. You know, and they're just trucking away, doing their thing. Obviously, they, they put in a new dryer and, and did something different with the sound because, you know, I haven't heard anything about the sound, and then now the smell has popped up. So, um, so I mean, they, they have done some improvements. Clearly, there's, there's something else going on with the smell and, um, you know, and a company really has an obligation to be a good steward to the community. And, and I think they've done that with the sound. They just need to kind of expand that into the smell a little bit more.
And I actually think they are taking steps to, to improve that as far as the rotting potatoes and potato juice. They understand full well what we discussed at our meeting, uh, last Wednesday. And they understand that it's causing issues in the community. But it, it's something that, you know, I, I certainly don't wanna make alibis and say that, well, let's give them some more time. But the things that, or the changes that they need to make aren't gonna happen overnight.
Just to chime in too, I, I have noticed that they have been a little bit busier than, from what I've noticed in the past couple of months. So it looks like production has ramped up slightly. So I, I have, from what I, I have viewed, I have assumed that the reason why smell has become an issue again is because they ramped up production slightly. So there, you do have that, because from the smells I've been noticing, it's just more of like the burnt, once after the.
The roasted, roasted smell, yeah.
So.
And if, I think if people continue to have problems with the roasted smell long after the juice and the rotting potato issue is taken care of, um, what can you say? I mean, that's, that's the cost. That's the smell of industry. And we had it when we had the canning factory, we had a silage pile that was fermenting. People didn't like that either.
And I a hundred percent agree with you.
Yeah, and so it's, you know, it's something that, I'm sorry, but they may have to put up with it.
And I a hundred percent agree with you guys. I just want to bring to your attention that situation.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything else in Northland Drying? Matt, we'll move on to item twelve, new business. Supporter Dina requests an increased annual benefit level for our Fire Relief Association to two thousand dollars in twenty twenty-two. Open for discussion? Input from?
Tim.
Tim?
Could you come back up?
Did you wanna make any statements regarding this?
Uh, just basically that, uh, if one of these are about to find a performing project, I would put it up to two thousand. Like I said, the state says, or, you know, it'll go up to twenty-three hundred financially secured. But that'd be quite a jump in seventeen fifty, and you did up twenty-three hundred. It's worth it, and two thousand is kind of in the middle. Really appreciate if, uh, you would consider that for two thousand per year month plus.
I would just like to see some people there in front of you. That's where I'm at. I mean, you have anything?
I can pass you this, but I probably shouldn't say this out loud. It has some numbers on it.
Yeah, we did. And that's, um, then the state was running behind it. The court didn't give it the force back. So we were supposed to be here like two months ago at the same time, and then, and then we got a report back. So that's why we said, well, you know, it's broken. It's, uh, it's a little bit less likely to be two thousand. Oh, so you're not gonna follow that? Does that fall in line with it?
Well, what would happen is if, if you bump it up to two thousand, when the auditors would audit the books again for the next year, we hit at the two thousand dollar benefit level. If there wouldn't be enough money in that fund, interest rates drop, whatever, then the city is gonna be asked to send them a check to make sure there's enough money in that account. Then we would have to put money into that account to cover it. Because we, it's kind of like the post office. You have to make sure that there's enough money in that account if everyone would retire.
Which I recall, right, it's a three-year. If it does stop growing, you got three years for the investments to come back again. So you would have to bump it in a way. And after my last time, we put it in a way. We found that after the fact, we have two years. So if you say we wanted to put money in that time, so the investments came back well, we wouldn't have to put money in. So you have a few years for the parts to come back.
Do you have to really have to be really tight?
No.
Do we like to have Spencer's paper work?
I don't wanna cut you short.
No, I think that's.
There's a few people that would barbecue me for.
Oh, we had Nicole, too, the Spencer's desk department. I did my time. And I know it was very hectic before you left, and, uh, as soon as you left, I did a little. And I know it was very hectic before he left and uh, as soon as he left, I knew it would.
I think that would be a route to go. Would someone care to make a motion to table this?
I'll make a motion to table, mm, you know, the next name or future date.
On the first, Monday of March?
November first.
November first.
Motion to.
Yeah, I don't.
September.
November first. Is there a second to that motion?
I second it.
Motion by council member Bus, second by coun- uh, council member Thomas to table the action on the Arlington Fire Relief Association uh, contribution. And let's see, uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carried and that'll be ca- uh, tabled until November first meeting.
I have another question, Tim. If, um, how does that work if a bunch of fire uh, men or women retire?
That's exactly how that fund works. It has to sell, so let's say right now, let's say, let's say that accident will all wipe out. That's we'll pay out everybody a hundred percent. That's where those numbers are working off of. A hundred percent payout, yeah.
Okay.
And that's where, that's, yeah, that's where they said we could actually up to twenty-three hundred, cause we have that much in place, and we twenty-three hundred to pay out, we have twenty-five hundred.
Okay. I guess we're the, on the city side, we're looking at budget, our budget and, and how much can we afford to pay them?
Well, in documentation.
In documentation to support, supportive, yeah, yeah.
November first.
November first. Okay, item thirteen, approve or deny personnel employee relations committee recommendations on interviewing process for firefighters and fire department officer candidates. City administrator, you're listening?
We went over this at our last personnel committee meeting, but it was last week about the process. Just to have it mimic the process for interviewing for the anduants. So the administrator and the fire chief should be interviewing the firefighter candidates and the personnel employee relations committee would interview the fire department officer candidates. The personnel committee is Joe Morgan and Matt Sharpie. And myself.
I'll make a motion to approve uh, the personnel employee relations committee recommendation on the interviewing process of firefighting, fire departments officer candidates.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by council member Batch, or second by council member Bus to approve the personnel employee relations committee recommendation and that being to, um, or for the process, I should say, of firefighters and fire department officer candidates. More discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carried. Item fourteen, approve or deny city payment of hemp heaven back real estate taxes in the amount of five thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars and forty-two cents to allow the city to record the land transfer. And that would be uh, the twenty-two acres.
The twenty-two acres in the southwest side of town.
Come back to the EDA as far as being ownership, right?
Derek Bushman, who was the owner for that property, filled out all the paperwork and returned it to Attorney Arneson, but he failed to pay the taxes while he had it. And we can't record that land transfer with back taxes owed on the piece of property. Attorney Arneson has reached out to Derek Bushman to try to get that money or have him pay the county directly, but as of today, it's still not paid.
Uh, no. Uh, I set this out in my original letter to him along with the real estate uh, transfer documents. So, you know, we mentioned it upfront. Um, I had a phone conversation with him about that same time uh, in which he agreed that he would sign the deed and pay the back taxes. So that we could record the deed. Uh, I then got the deed package back in the mail, fully signed, ready to record, but there's no real estate tax check with it. I made three follow-up calls and two emails, two or three emails to him without any further response.
No way, this thing.
Yeah.
Are we able to uh, you know, basically take him to like court for it, or is there nothing, you know? Is there anything we can do to try to recoup it?
It's, yeah, it's, it's uh, it's not really something we can sue them directly for. The taxes are between hemp heaven and the county. Um, and the recourse for unpaid taxes is tax foreclosure.
Yeah, they would, the county would take the land then.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I had this on my calendar to, to bring it up, cause I've been uh, wanting to get this land back uh, based on the fact that they haven't done anything with it. Um, the, I mean, I, it looks like we don't have a choice but to pay the taxes. It's kinda land to nowhere, um, but we were getting rent from the farmer and we've lost that for two years now. Um, so it'd probably take us a, a couple of years worth of rent to, to get our, our tax money back, uh, and then be back whole again.
It's uh, sort of disheartening to see somebody purchase land at a bargain price. I mean, a bargain price.
Yeah, like a dollar.
Without, without any money down, without any, you know, and then now we have to pay to get it back. I think as far as the incentive to uh, bring businesses to town, we need some, we need that money upfront. If we're gonna charge somebody ten thousand dollars for twenty-two acres, I think we need that ten thousand dollars right upfront, non-refundable. Either they're serious and they put some skin in the game, or they're not serious.
The, the challenge with this property is we have no way of getting to it. So I mean, it's almost, and I'm gonna throw this out there, short of us renting this property, we have no way to get there. So this land is useless to us. Uh, and that was where my negotiation, I was trying to, to uh, get them to give us a uh, easement from that property when we were basically giving them this land. Cause I, I could tell you right then and there, I was feeling that this stuff was not going anywhere. Um, here we sit, we're either gonna spend six grand to get some land that we're never gonna be able to build on it. No one's gonna buy it from us unless it's related to uh, the property that's already there and they've already backed out on it. Uh, so we pay the money back, it goes back into farmland, it does nothing for the city for what they intended to do for it.
No one's already told me they don't want it.
No, they do not.
Yeah.
Well, uh, this is Attorney Arneson, Joe. Um, uh, we uh, we do have uh, possibilities to access the property. Uh, and in fact, I was working on a memo to the council, which, which I will get out. Um, keeping in mind, the city does have the right of eminent domain. Uh, and actually, we do have an easement already in existence coming down from First Street, um, southeast. Um, it's not wide enough for a full city street, but we do have an easement there. Uh, there are other possibilities, including an interceptor street from Highway seventeen over to Highway five or County nine. Uh, that's been discussed uh, many times over the years.
And just recently, yeah.
And, and again, just recently. So I, I was gonna put together a, a memo on all of that, uh, but uh, I don't.
Yeah, I, I would like to see that, cause I mean, from what I recall, we had this verbal agreement with, uh, I don't know if it was the state or the highway or the county or whatever, that, that we were gonna be able to get access from Highway five. And then that guy retired and, and that whole deal went away. Well, then we were sitting with this land trying to, spending money advertising, trying to get it, you know, to get some, some, something built on it that was gonna, you know, add jobs and, and promote taxes and all that good stuff. Well, then it sorta basically seemed as we had no access. And that's, that's what I, we had no access to it. The only ones that could access it was the property owner of, of uh, you know, Northland.
Yeah, but that's not true because people cannot block you from getting to your property either. So there's that.
It's a business, you have to be able to drive someone's back.
That, well, that's true, but I would say we can get to our property. They, they have to, the property owners around us have to allow us access to our property. That's law.
I think the biggest issue is the cost for getting down there. It was like two point, it was close to three million dollars.
Well, to develop that.
The road and infrastructure.
Just to get the road and infrastructure to get down.
Yeah, and that, that wouldn't be, wow, I mean, me at this point, uh, without seeing what Attorney Arneson comes up with, it's like, he, he almost just let it go to the county and let them oxygen it off, auction it off and it's farmland, you know, forever. Uh, because we're gonna stick more money into it. We already lost our tail on, on the deal to begin with and nothing came out of it. So.
Well, I think there's other options out there though too, Joe, for that property.
In the meantime, it can be rented out.
Right.
So.
We still have time to put it up for bids, rent it out for farmland for the next couple of years. I usually do that like in November anyway, so if we can get it back.
Do you have some kind of slush fund or something that we could pull?
Not necessarily.
Six thousand dollars from?
It'd have to come out of, well, it could come out of some of the EDA money, I suppose.
Well, I would, I would probably recommend that it come out of the EDA funds.
Well, I think we all agree that probably we're gonna have to pay those taxes.
Well, I mean, I would say EDA, that's to pay those taxes.
Then one of the proposals from Northland was to pay the taxes on part of it and pay for land or whatever. Uh, when Northland was here and met with us, Lee was talking about purchasing that land again. He had mentioned it in meetings.
He met with EDA, not with the council?
Yeah.
With the EDA.
He had, he had mentioned it right now, that they would, he's willing to pay the taxes on it if they would purchase it at a whatever. I'm not saying the amount that they offered on it is a hundred percent what I'm in line with, but they had offered to pay the taxes in part of purchasing.
Well, sort of, if they were to purchase it, you'd have.
Add that on there, absolutely.
Yeah, just get it back that way.
Well, then it'd be for anybody else that we, that, cause there was like two other people that had interest in it. Whoever's I bid or is winner, I mean.
Well, but what are they gonna do with it? I mean, the whole purpose of this land.
Well, it's, that's, that's not our business, cause we're selling it.
Yeah.
We're not doing the EDA thing with it. It's a sale outright.
No, so let's go back to.
So you're taking it off?
You can't, just add jobs and add, add taxes and revenue to, to the city. So what's, what's gonna happen with the land? If we, you know, sell it or let them take it back or whatever? Is it just gonna sit there empty or are they gonna build something on it? Cause, I mean, the city paid good money for it and, and then basically gave it away on, on the fact that we were gonna get this benefit out of it. So now we get nothing out of it. Or potentially, I mean, that's, that's what I'm asking. What would they do with it?
Correct. If we sell it at market rates and they don't have a development agreement, we can't hold them to jobs or building anything on there for that matter.
At that point, I don't understand why we really care if we're selling land.
We're getting rid of.
Market value.
If it was market value, but it wasn't. It was like a dollar. I mean, it was crazy.
We're not, we're talking about two different things here.
We're talking moving forward from here, where we can.
Yeah. All right. Well, if it was market value, I'd support that any day. Then you go buy some land that you can do something with.
Well, I think.
So are we looking for a motion to pay the taxes?
Just pay the ta- this is a issue.
Make a motion to pay the taxes on.
For EDA to pay the taxes?
For, okay, for EDA to pay the taxes.
You're welcome, Holly. I'll second that.
Go pay the taxes, we'll just money off. Deal.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'm sure.
Oh, she did say, I'm sorry, missed it. Motion by council member Thomas, second by council member Batch, to approve the payment of hemp heaven back real estate taxes in the amount of five thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars forty-two cents to allow the city to record land transfer, uh, and those funds to come out of EDA funds. More discussion?
Is there any cost associated with us getting the land back?
Filing fee. A forty-six dollar filing fee.
Okay.
One other thing occurs to me, we're talking real estate taxes. I don't know what portion, but uh, some of those taxes come back to the city. So it goes in a circle.
Okay.
I hadn't looked at that previously, but I think a significant part of this tax bill comes back to the city of Arlington.
To the city property.
Yeah, so that softens the blow.
Okay, anything else? All in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carried. Item fifteen, discussion of damaged Dan Buck Thomas plaque at the uh, it's Morrison's plaque.
Last week I received a call from Buck's daughter that there had been damage done and actually I was still in town that night, so I went up there and I took a look at, and took this picture that night, talked to the police, the police had a police, there's a record, it's attached to the packet as well. I contacted the company, I did some research, cause I didn't know if the city had originally bought this plaque or how it happened. It was donations. There were donations, including some from the Minnesota Twins, that were used to pay for this plaque. I contacted the company. It's about thirteen hundred dollars for the plaque. So I'm looking for some direction from council, what you would like me to do. Would you like me to file an insurance claim? We have a thousand dollar deductible. I could file an insurance claim. Uh, does city council want to purchase a new one? I can purchase a new one for about that thirteen hundred dollars again. She got me a quote of twelve hundred something for, to replace it.
So these nicks, it, it appears to be like nicks in the paint. Are they indebted in the aluminum or is that just the paint?
Yeah, there's dents in there too.
What did they, so they shoot it?
Shot it, some bird shot, maybe.
Someone shot it.
Cause, cause what one could do, uh, basically that's a sand casting. Um, and then basically they coat it and then they take a Scotch-Brite and they, and they go over the top of those letters. So we could potentially just paint it and then with a Scotch-Brite pad, on a round circular, you know, hand sander, you just take that paint back off of the top of the letters and obviously the face.
How much would something like that cost, Joe?
Joe, did you?
I would think probably your, you know, whether it be one of our maintenance guys or we, you know, find somebody to do it, I would think maybe three hundred bucks or something. I, I don't know.
I went out there and looked at it today too and it, you know, the, where the, the paint, you can get your fingernail under it and peel a little bit, so um, it is a fairly heavy coat of black paint. I don't, I don't think I, well, I should have maybe looked at the back of the plaque. I didn't see a lot of denting from the shots. What I saw is the pop, the paint, it was popped off.
Yeah. Yeah, and they'd probably just sandblast the paint off, they'd recoat it and then they'd take the top, top layer off. Um, you know, whether it's an artist or, you know, just someone who, who does small jobs like that. Um, again, that's just a sand casting and, and it's aluminum, so.
Yeah.
Um, if you take the paint off, you recoat it and then you, you buff the top a bit and, and I think it'd be, you know, good as new.
So everything that's raised then would, would pop out again?
Yeah, yeah, basically, you know, people do it with engines, you know, valve covers, right? You've got raised fin valve covers.
Yeah.
You paint, I mean, you take the Scotch-Brite, clear the top off. This is, this is the same thing. Uh, we do sand castings at my work, so uh, quite familiar.
Do you see if Schneider could take care of it?
I was just gonna ask, who do you think could do this?
I'd say you check with Asperber. These are auto body guys in town.
I, I.
There's nothing done to the structure part of the.
No, 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 not at all. No. I think we should look into seeing if.
Should I file an insurance claim?
No.
I mean, you can have a quarter if somebody comes back with crazy high. I mean, you can have a quarter, if somebody comes back with crazy high, I mean, then you're looking at the thirteen hundred dollars, but I would think for around three hundred bucks or so, we should be able to get it done, this isn't.
I think regardless.
I think so.
Regardless, even if it did cost thirteen hundred dollars, that doesn't really pay the, the violations payment, that's what it's gonna cost us in the long run versus just paying for it outright.
Yes, you may, I'm sorry, Lori?
Um, I talked to somebody who was part of getting that all there, and there is a special fund that is still, that still has money. It still has money in it, for things out at the parking lot, and for things that was donated for these items, and for the park.
Where is this?
Still money in this account.
Where is the special fund?
Jim Peterson has the checkbook.
Oh.
Are you saying that funds would be available to get it repaired?
To get it repaired.
I can't say that they would be, but I was told there's money in that account yet.
Okay, okay.
I mean, I can't say, I can't speak for them.
Okay.
Or that account, but I, I'm.
The sportsmen's club, was that the account?
It was those guys, it was those guys.
Yeah, sports, sure.
I'd be willing to bet, if you would go down and talk to Lee, and say, hey, we had a couple of vandals.
Mm-hmm, I can show him, bring him the picture.
Yeah, bring the picture.
And I was also told that someone else reached out to that company, they still have, if it comes to them, they still have it.
They, they still have it.
And so that cost of making that mall would not be in the cost of the price.
Yeah, the price was a little lower, I mean, we, we do have a price in front of us.
It was twelve, I included it in the packet.
And my wife, thinking you were going to out there so quickly, and, and reaching out to that company. I didn't know, there's so many things have changed with personnel, since all of this all went on, so I didn't know if anybody would be able to come in and go in. So I appreciate you being able to help us.
Okay, we will pursue that, um, hopefully, we can get.
I will check with that, if it's nice.
Get it repaired at a decent price, yeah.
I would really appreciate if you could go out and check to bring it up, because I don't think that's a very.
Nah, maybe, yeah.
It's not, it's not, and, and, so, it's a, it's a.
No.
I, I was just gonna add that, since we, we know who made it in the first place. You know, if they casted it and then coated it, it might just be that, you know, whether they are able to sandblast, or we have somebody else sandblast it, they might be able to just coat back over it.
That, the company that made it, you mean?
Yeah, the one that actually made it, yeah, so they, they could be an option too.
Okay.
Can I ask that you talk to me and my family before that happens, because?
Can you leave me your phone number?
What?
Can you leave your phone number?
Put your phone number on the, on the sign sheet.
So that I can contact you, yeah.
Because I, if it's not gonna be done in a way that's.
Looks decent.
Right.
Oh, no, we.
I mean, let's do it a lot, I'll write up until this, so if they won't, or I, I just feel like I would like to raise my, we're gonna adapt, we to have it what
Like new again.
Closest we can get, yes.
I think we're all of the same opinion, we want it to look like it, like it was when it was, right, original, yeah.
I agree.
Right, right.
But how are you gonna prevent it from now on?
That's, that's me too, I agree.
That's. Yeah. That's true.
We have to put a glass or out there the.
There is a camera out there, I believe, there used to be.
There used to be a camera that they moved from place to place, but not much of that cameras anymore.
What do you mean, place to place, park to park?
Park to park.
Or just somewhere within that park?
Park to park. I think there should be. Yeah. Yep.
There's a, there's a.
Yeah, there's, because that's, that's.
Because that, that park is not.
There's a building that's locked.
That's why this place is haunted, because he's been three years, so he's been out of that park.
Yeah, these are concessions.
Repairing and trying to prevent vandalism, so I'm just wondering if, we have some police officers now, can't they just take a post run, isn't this, this time of the day, or when else?
They do go out, notice it's on our reports, they do go out there, but, but you can't, you know, you can't.
I know you can't be there every minute, but sometimes the presence is enough to stop, so I'm gonna give them a pass.
Oh, yeah, no.
Something else, we don't lock that anymore, when I first started working here, we used to lock that gate, so you couldn't get in at night.
Oh, yeah.
And I have noticed that it's not locked at night anymore.
You mean that very first gate, to get anyone into the parking lot?
To get into the parking lot, yeah.
And that's our maintenance people that should be locking it, shouldn't they?
It's not a ten o'clock, no. Not a ten o'clock, no.
Oh, no. Somebody dropped the ball on the locking.
At least I would imagine.
I don't know.
Because I think.
Yeah.
If there's a, there's a way to.
Yeah.
Lock that up a little earlier.
All right, we'll move on to item sixteen, um, you're welcome, thanks, Lori.
Leave your phone number for me, please, so I can get in touch with you.
Uh, item sixteen, discussion on playground sign at Frenzel Park.
This, let me pull up the pictures of this one. I saw my records on that. Put everything in there ahead, okay. This one, um, Doncock from Saint Paul's reached out to me, uh, they were looking at replacing this as a donation to the city. And then they got a quote back, that it was gonna be seventy-one hundred dollars.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, they had someone, another person look at it again, and now it's down to fifty-two hundred dollars.
That's for the brick portion.
To replace all the brick on there.
Not the sign, the sign is fine.
Not the sign, the sign stays.
Okay.
It's just the brick, they took this picture from the back, you can see how much it's crumbling.
Yeah.
They were wondering, and just looking for consensus from the council, if the council would be willing to pay half, if Saint Paul's paid for half. And this would happen in twenty twenty-two.
Yes, can you give us a little background on that piece of property, it was, uh, left to the, uh, church, I believe, it was a local school,
Saint Paul's.
and then they donated it to the city of Arlington.
Frenzel Park.
I don't recall specifically, but my understanding is that Martha Frenzel donated that directly to the city interstate.
Oh.
Oh.
I may be wrong about that, I'd have to check my files.
Uh, look, look at the sign, though, what is it, what does the sign say? This playground donated to Saint Paul's Lutheran School by Martha Frenzel, so.
Okay.
It was by Martha Frenzel dedicated nineteen eighty?
Wait a minute, no.
Nineteen eighty-nine.
Where, where is this?
Frenzel Park.
West of, west of Jim Kraft's shop.
Yeah.
And the sign is right up in the, uh, corner towards the street.
Corner, mm-hmm.
The northeast corner of the park.
Hmm, okay. Well, maybe that is what happened.
So I'm just wondering.
That's, that's a while ago, it says nineteen eighty-four.
Nine, I think it's eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, I think it's eighty-nine, yeah.
Does it have to be brick?
No, it's not.
It's not, it's not brick, but.
We don't have that, that nice of a sign on any of our other parks.
Well.
I mean, we have a nice sign that was made by, uh, Scott Equipment, cutout ones at Four Seasons now, we have.
No, that's out by O S, O S I, is it, or, Green Isle?
Well, the sign made it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, right.
Stainless steel.
O E M?
I mean, it's on a post.
It's on two, two square posts, yeah, it wouldn't.
Or anything like that.
It would.
I don't know, when, when the type tried to, uh, cut our, cut our budget.
Cut.
Would that come out of Parks Fund then, or?
I would say yes.
Add the Parks Fund?
I would, I would pull it out of the Parks budget.
I would think just the post, similar to what we have at Four Seasons Park. You know, because if you do another brick one, what it's gonna look like twenty years from now, thirty years from now, do it over again, so.
Well, then they would probably have enough money for the.
Twos.
Well, they wouldn't do that, they're steel, they're, they're steel.
Steel, yeah.
Well, I mean, they, they wanna keep that steel piece, right?
Signs, yeah, the signs stays.
This, yeah.
But two posts.
Never post or some, or two posts, right, but then.
Two posts, yeah.
They have donations, I'm sure they would have enough for the brick, the two posts.
Is, is Saint Paul's particularly keeping the brick, absolutely, or no doubt?
Not for sure, that's what they wanted to do, was to keep the brick, but Dan and I talked, and they hadn't made a decision either, and he was kinda fishing around with council.
Maybe go take a picture, take a picture of the post down on Four Seasons and show that to him, and.
I, I love stuff like this, I love signs, where residents donate to the city organizations, and I think, you know, that keeps it alive and keeps that memory going, and I think that's hugely important, but, um, I don't know, I think there might be a different way that they can post that sign.
Yeah. Okay, so.
I will report back to Mr. Paul.
Yeah, see if they're interested in something like that.
In changing it out.
And they can do that, so, just change. The sign, I believe, I looked at that, I don't think that's aluminum, I think it's.
That's cast.
It's brass or cast brass or some, it's, it's some pretty nice stuff, so.
Yeah, that's heavy, that sign.
All right, city administrator will follow up on that. Miscellaneous business, committee updates, anything you haven't, you haven't seen in the minutes, or in the, uh, agenda? Open discussion, uh, do we wanna talk about the complaint about parking, the driveway complaint, or do you wanna save that till a future meeting? Any, any comments?
Well, what's, what was your comment, I don't understand, you want it yellow and it's black?
Supposedly, on each, on each driveway, it wraps around the corner a little bit from the driveway with yellow paint. You know, I, I don't know, maybe it's two feet?
Mm-hmm.
Let's just say it's two feet.
Did they just do that to, you know, to their school, or that?
I'm assuming.
No, on.
No, that's the only place.
That's the only place they did it?
By school, she found it in her driver's for fifty-five and alive. Paperwork said not to park there, Andrew, well, I looked up the state statue, and there's nothing in the state statue that says you can't park on a yellow line in the state statue, Andrew was following, Andrew said the same thing. He said, I can't stop them from parking on the edge of the driveway.
When did the yellow go in? I'm assuming pre-.
If it was, it was fresh, it went in just this past summer, because there was somebody around one evening, late afternoon, painting all the, all the curbs in town.
And it got taken away, somebody maybe painted over it.
I don't know who, who, oh, I see, who painted over it, Tom?
Kirby.
Oh.
At, at Andrew's request.
Okay. Yeah.
So why did it, and the yellow, yeah?
Uh, well, we talked to Kirby about that, and it was just, it's just a few by school there that they painted yellow, not every driveway. Is your driveway painted yellow on the corners, or yours?
No, no.
Yours?
No, 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 I got all yellow, except for the fire, I got.
It was just past history that it.
Yes, it, it was a constant, uh, source of complaints many years ago, uh, when, uh, it became more common for teenage drivers going to the school to have vehicles, and there was not enough parking. And, uh, sometimes they would, uh, uh, press the limits a little bit, and, uh, you know, park with, uh, part of their vehicle hanging out into the driveways, and, uh, we had a lot of irritated residents, and so, uh, there was, uh, at one point, a council action, uh, to, uh, paint some of those.
Well, the curb.
Just, just, just the returns coming out of the driveways, yellow, uh, so that the police could enforce that. And, um, I don't wanna misquote the law, but, uh, I, I think if, if the city has officially designated a yellow curb zone, uh, that means you can't park there. But as I understood, you know, from separate communication with the chief, he hasn't caught anybody, uh, parking within that yellow zone, which is why he hasn't digged it anybody.
And now there is no yellow zone.
And now there is no yellow zone, yeah, yeah.
Well, if council had made, uh, what, a recommendation or a suggestion or, uh, decision to put lines there,
Direct.
directed to put the yellow lines there, that should probably come back to the council to reverse that, would you think that's?
Rather than painting over it.
Rather than taking it off?
Yes.
I would say so.
Yeah, the, the yellow, for me, is, is, we, we do it on, you know, one whole, long area of our, right out in front of our facility, I've got it on the side of a hill, uh, which is the city street, where we have our fire, uh, connection to our facility that we, we maintain as a company and, and paint yellow. Um, so, yeah, to me, yellow means you don't park there. Um, and, and I think there's, from what, just listening to what she had to say, and then thinking about the reasons why it was yellow to begin with, um, I, I would support making it yellow again. And if that's just, you know, a couple of feet, and that's so that the kids don't park there, so that she can get out of her driveway safely.
I think it's more than that, kids.
I think, I think it is too.
It's not kids, it's not kids that's parked there.
Okay, all right, well, whoever's parking there.
Somebody's parking there, but regardless, yes, and there's enough room, I think, on that block, or in front of her place, to park one or two vehicles right in front of her house, and one in between her house and the next house.
The next house.
So there's plenty of space, it's just what vehicles do you park there?
Mm-hmm.
And you, you get two cars there, you can't get a pickup truck in there.
Well, I'd see, I, I'd like to see them painted yellow again, and then if they park, I mean, it's gonna get nitpicky. Or there's the bumper, if you stand on one angle, the bumper will be over it, whatever, give them a ticket, be done with it.
Give them a warning.
Give them a warning.
What would you?
Find the owner, give them a warning.
Put the yellow back on the curb.
I think so.
And then she needs to, when he gets called, and they're parked over the yellow, give a warning, written warning. Because they've already been warned, right? The people that are parked, and they've already been talked to.
Have the, has the action called somebody, I thought it was.
I think this was last year, the truck with the, the truck with the.
With the hitch on.
The hitch was last, was a year ago, or something.
Well, I mean, just to have that discussion, right, you don't have to ticket them, but if they repeat it.
I'm, I'm assuming.
That's, that's when you write it out, or whatever, but.
Yeah, a warning, we could also put this in the newsletter to try to get the, you know, the word out to, to people that yellow means, you know.
They can also go into school announcements. So.
I talked to Joe Levine, or talked to Rose, and had Rose put in the announcements.
Ask her, should you write up a little something?
And get the cor, curb painted while the weather is, paint, painting weather, yeah. Uh, just a question on that same general topic, does the school have a parking arrangement with Saint Paul's on the lot by the bowling alley? That's bare, it's completely bare.
They still have it.
My child would drive to school, don't need his car to walk. So I told him.
From three blocks away, you know?
And I told him.
Then leave the car at home and walk.
Park the car at home, and then walk to school.
Exactly what I would tell him. I would even tell him that, and he's not my kid.
Yeah, there was a couple times, after we had that meeting, I went home and lit him up, I said, you do not park anywhere near that school. Well, that's so far to walk.
Oh, geez.
Well, guess what?
Well, they, I mean, they, they went there early and parked in the parking lot, where they can abide by the signs that are on the school.
But you know, the first year that, that school was open with parking to the north end, that lot was, oh, used a lot, the one by the bowling alley.
Mm-hmm.
And all of a sudden, it's not used at all.
I think they migrated the parking on the side.
Well, yeah, yeah, and that's where some of the problems come, I know that, well, that's a lot.
Well, no, that's been a lot better though, too.
Yeah, I, there's not that much of that. Yeah, whatever. All right, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
I was just.
Oh, oh, Joe, Joe, hold it, hold it, two things, Joe.
We got two things.
Um, the, it came up, and I don't remember which committee, if it was the fire committee or the personnel committee, but, uh, we were talking about the ambulance and the retirement, um, and I, and I wanna share the context of how it was shared with us, because, uh, I think that was a little bit different than the way that it was expressed tonight. Um, the context that was shared with us was that, uh, everybody on the fire department is upset because Gaylord raised their, uh, retirement to two thousand dollars. Um, and it's Matt Sharpie and myself, um, Amy was on the call, uh, Mayor Niigle was there as well, and, um, you know, we discussed just what, what the firemen and ladies, uh, commit to. Um, so Gaylord is sixty percent of the calls they're required to make per year. Um, Arlington is sitting at twenty percent, and at the last, uh, fire committee meeting, uh, you know, that topic had come up, and they about fell over when, when, when it was brought to, you know, hey, could we raise that, um, percentage? Or possibly, you know, raise that percentage, maybe drop the head count a little bit, um, there wasn't really any, uh, support from them on that. And I think to sum it up, the, the committee, when we were talking about the retirement, was that, you know, to raise the fund, you've got a committee next door doing three times the work as far as calls goes, and then we've got our guys and gals, or whoever, our, our, our fire department, you know, basically saying, we want more money. Um, and, and I just wanted to share that, cause that was, I think, in the end, we were basically saying, well, right now, with no more commitment, we were recommending, you know, maintaining the rate that we're at. A lot plays into that fund, stock market's going crazy right now, um, you get a sixty percent reduction in there, and then the city's forced to cover that, those other costs, so. I just wanted to share that, just, just so people are aware of, you know, what context and, and what was talked about.
Yeah, thanks, Joe. Kurt, did you have something?
Yeah, no, I just had a, a question, you know, with around the E D A. How does the E D A and the city moving forward, I don't know complaints about the smell of that, cause I know, Amy told me, there's some calls or whatever, the, the name is attached to it. Well, what if there's a lot of people in town, they don't, they own a business, they don't want their name out there, so, do you disregard those? Because I'm on that, I'm on that list because people are calling me. And, and they're afraid to call the city, they're like, well, at least the city should know there's a complaint, but, so my name's on there. But now if Norco makes a pitch to buy that twenty-two acres, I wanna know a good stack record, I don't care if, my personal opinion, I don't care if the name's recorded or not. So I guess I wanna know everybody's opinion, uh, you know, say if Norco wants to buy that land, and, well, we got five complaints from four different people. But there might be two hundred more people in town that are bitching about it, if they don't want, if they don't want their name attached to their complaints, so.
Sort of like somebody sending in a letter to the editor and not signing it.
Hand them a letter.
Yeah. No, I realize that.
I think, yeah, I know.
I mean, my personal, my personal opinion is, if, if they have a problem with it, they should feel free to complain and bring it to the council. If they don't wanna put their name to it, then I don't think it's, you know, that bothers them to them, because I can tell you, if it really bothers someone, you're gonna speak up. So, to me, yes, I wanna know who's complaining and why they're complaining.
To make it look good.
It's important, that's, we need to know that information, because we can't make a judgment on, if, if we only got twenty-three percent of the community complaining, that's not a very big complaint to me. Now, if you got thirty percent, or, you know, to me, it's all about numbers, to, to prevent a gruesome action against a citizen in town based on everyone's smell, which, that's subjective, so.
Yeah, but why do things, now a lot of people writing a letter to the editor, cause they don't wanna put their name to it, even though they're talking all around town, and, oh, how's that gonna be?
A lot of them put their name on it that I see in the.
Well.
No, they have to, but how many people aren't writing a letter, right, because they're not putting their name in it, because they don't want their name totally out there? It's the same way with this, people aren't gonna put their name totally out there, because they don't want their name on it, but they're gonna complain and complain and complain, because they don't like it.
Human nature.
To their, to their group.
True.
Human nature.
Cause, cause when we, we've got that, and there's a group of citizens that hang out at the coffee shop in the morning, and I kinda pulled one aside and said, you know, explain to me what's going on here, like, the tree thing. And, there, there was no recollection of, you know, the, and, and the stories that I was hearing around town is trees were being killed on one adjacent property. It's like, well, how is potato juice killing those trees, it's gotta jump across the street.
Yeah, yeah.
It, it literally would have to emulate and jump.
Oh, cool.
Yes, there's this.
That'd be cool.
I mean, like I said, my personal opinion, cause if, if you're not gonna, if, if you don't want your name on, then how bad is it to? Well, and, and, and part of it, if citizens come here all the time and sit right in front of us and tell us all their complaint.
But now, so, when a council member brings up a concern from a resident or a leader, are you gonna announce something in that for you?
I won't.
I did a pretty decent job of doing that for now. You might get around about location of where, be, because a lot of it to me, Kurt, is if you have, one person that calls me every day, tons a day, for the same thing. Eventually, we're gonna march in the northlands and say, why, you know, there's one perfect area to be. And we had talked about it, we did, when this was coming up before, where you have, where we think it's just like three people, four people. Well, those three or four people don't represent the entirety of.
So, but my question is, well, it's a lot of different people in town, but they don't wanna file a physical complaint with the media or?
Well, and take the name off and list it just like the police do on their police report, three hundred block of West Main Street.
You know, the, the other thing is, is that it was a while ago, probably about two and a half years ago, when there was a few of them that were spearheading everything against Norco. And they had a petition that they had go around with a lot of different names on it, a lot of different names, many, many names, and people did sign that. But they're not gonna actually call up or email or take the time and do it that way, you know, right?
And I think, cause, cause we were, we were approached with that, and my wife works there, and, to me, the legitimacy of that petition was, is, is specifically, said, here, run down, you know, they went up and down Anderson Road, and then they went down Clinton, and then they went down Baker. And when I talked to my in-laws over on Chandler, they knew nothing about it. So I mean, that, it's that.
Along with the petition, along with the.
It was the order when they thought it was maybe mostly affecting, right?
Yeah.
Because it was mostly about the noise at that point.
Yeah. It's pretty easy to sign a piece of paper if you, if you come, open up the door and somebody says, you know, it smells here, doesn't it? You wanna do something about it, just sign here.
Well.
They're off to the next door.
Yeah, but if you don't, if you don't believe it, you're not gonna sign it.
Well, partially.
Hit it. I'm pretty sure if I come, hit it.
Now you're talking all differently, yeah.
But, but I think with similar situations, there is a certain amount of peer pressure that goes into it. I mean, for me, it has, and when I'm approached by something from a friend, I'm going to support them as a friend. We're all old enough now that we think we're, well, this is a, we're a cause, and you should all know by now with me, if I think it's a load, I'm gonna say, no, forget it. However, there is not that same emulation in town, and we're, I've seen it on a limited basis. I think they're legitimate, and we have to recognize them and validate them, and as a follow-up, me, maybe John, I like to have a name, so I can contact with you and say, hey, is it fixed, is it done, is it, what are your, you, you're approaching us?
Yeah, are you, are you smelling rotten potatoes, or are you smelling roasting potatoes?
Yeah, is it still? Exactly, is it still rotten, is it sewage, does I know?
Cause it's, it's what, what is, that's the other thing, what is the smell, it's the smell of just the fry fry, and then cooking up those potatoes. You know, that's probably not going to work.
That's probably not going to work.
Well, and, and the other, the other hard part of it is last fall, when there was a lot of smell coming out, and I had a person stop and say, do you smell that? Oh, it was, it was palmitium, it was pen pack, there wasn't anything to it, potatoes. To me, I mean, I have smelled enough palmitium over my years.
To know what smells like.
It's distinguishable. You know?
And the issue I'm moving forward, not interrupt you, so I'm on the E D A, and, okay, so, I have a presentation from Northland, so if somebody comes up to me, I tell them to file a contest with the city and have to sign their name. Um, and if they don't wanna do it, then they don't do it, and the city doesn't know if two block they're complaining.
Well, I can be quite honest with you, there's only one person that complains to me in town, and.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, what should I do?
Well, direct them, direct them here, because that's where they should be coming, if they have a complaint with the city.
Yeah.
They must come to our, they should be coming here, they should be coming here.
If they don't want their name on, then that must not bother them.
True.
If they're gonna, they're gonna.
I agree, if they're not gonna give you the name.
That's fine, that's fine.
Put your name on the line.
Then it mustn't bother them that much.
I agree.
Oh, that's.
Yes, in the back. Yeah.
I don't know why I live out behind Hollywood Field and things there.
I do.
You can smell it out there on the right day, it's gonna be where the wind's blowing from.
Yeah, it, it has a lot to do with it.
I mean, that's a mile out of town.
Yeah.
Or seven minutes, I should say, so it's like, you gotta take it both directions, it's a business in town, catastrophe, I mean. I mean, you gotta look at it from a side of the world, it's not perfect everywhere.
That's right.
Yeah, I mean, the way I look at it, I always go back to what the mayor said earlier about when the senator, Big Stone, boy, that guy decided, pop, it was just something everyone knew was part of that E D A.
Yeah, in Gay, in Gaylord's, it's chicken barns, so, you know, take your pick.
Yeah, and that, you know, they like that.
Chicken barns, sewage ponds, chicken guts, big, yeah.
So you wanna smell something right in the morning, smell chicken in the morning. Uh, I'm dead.
I have one more thing to add about Ms. Frances Furch and her comment on chapter seven of the city code.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The city code says, and I can barely read this, the presence or absence of such yellow curtailing shall, however, not affect the enforcement of the parking set off regulations contained in this action, section. It, so.
Well.
Yeah, I have to, uh, study that whole section.
It's not, it doesn't, I was gonna say, that to me doesn't say that if it's yellow, you're gonna get.
No, my recollection is, yeah, I was referring to the fact that, uh, if, let's say they caught some kid with his car halfway in somebody's driveway.
Mm-hmm.
They could still be warned or ticketed, even if that driveway outlet did not have a yellow curb. That's my recollection of that clause. But I, I have, I have to look at it, yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, you can't, you can't block somebody's driveway.
No.
Well, that's against the state statute, it's against the law to block the driveway.
All right, anything else, Joe?
I'll introduce a, uh, motion to adjourn.
Okay, all right, we know you're back. And who had second?
John.
Motion, motion by council member Morgan, second by council member Thomas to adjourn the meeting, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose no, meeting adjourned at eight thirty-four.